Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. It is 4:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting will be audio and video recorded. Please rise for the pleasure of the agents. First item, we have Old Colony School Representative Letter of Resignation, Maurice St. Amen. As to all concerned, I have come to the conclusion it's time to retire from the Old Colony Regional Locational Technical High School District Committee. As a member, it has been a rewarding experience, and I will remember all of my colleagues and friends I've made over the past 16 years. I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to serve. Please accept my resignation from the District School Committee as of April 30th, 2025. Is there a motion to accept Maurice's letter of resignation with regret?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we're here. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting me do it. That's all I was going to say.
Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to post a vacancy for 30 days for letters of interest.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We've got warrant, close, and ballot language.
Mr. Chairman, all town departments and relative committees have submitted their warrants, so it's time to close them. They've submitted their articles, so it's time to close the warrant. I move to close the warrant for the annual town meeting scheduled for June 2nd, 2025, as to articles submitted from town departments by town offices, boards, or committees, or by petition.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second part of this ballot language. As you know, we have ballot question for this upcoming election in regards to the debt exclusion for the school. If we approve the language, and Jamie, this letter, this packet you sent us, this has all been run through council?
This has been run through bond council, our council, and school council. And it's been forwarded to us by the schools, so as long as it's all right with the town clerk, it's good to go.
If for some reason she doesn't like it, can we, we can modify this before we submit it?
Well, she's going, I think, to the printer tomorrow.
In that case?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to offer a clarification. We're going to move forward with submitting it, but I think this still has a long way to go for it to be ready for prime time and, you know, for the, for town meeting. I think there's still a great deal of due diligence that needs to take place, you know, the finances of it, you know, the drastic need for it. So I'm willing to go forward with, you know, at least putting it as a placeholder, but I still think we reserve, at least I reserve the right, to form a more evolved opinion of it, you know, up until the actual April 22nd ballot.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I agree. I just...
This is a two-step process for this one. It's not only does it have to go on the ballot, it has to go on the warrant, and it has to be approved on the ballot for the debt exclusion and then for the appropriation on the warrant.
And the law serves as well as ultimately, this board has final say on borrowing money in general.
And the warrant.
And the warrant. So we still have our options, and I believe the school has two public hearings coming for this, along with some other meetings. So we do have some, some time, and ultimately, the work doesn't start until we finally approve it anyway.
I think the, my warrant, another conversation, joint meeting with FinCom to discuss more details, right? I mean, we talked about it a little bit last time, but the reality of it is that this proposal is a 20-year bond in the amount of roughly up to 4.5 million, I believe it is.
4.2.
4.2 million, just over $4 million. I think this, this, this board and the FinCom have some conversations to be had, right? Ultimately, there is concern that you're going to borrow for 20 years, but what's the equipment longevity of, right?
Correct.
I talked about the extended warranty. I still haven't gotten anything back on extended warranties from anyone, at least I haven't seen it.
Or the roof.
Or the roof. And do, would townspeople want to borrow for 20 years for something that might not last 20 years? That's, that's some of the questions I think that have gone unanswered, and I think we still need to get those answers, so.
Correct.
You know, we can, we can do whatever we're doing tonight, but this is for ballot question on the April 22nd, 2025 ballot, which would get override, known as a debt exclusion, for a period of 20 years.
Town clerk's here.
The town clerk is here. She came in.
Do you want to have her review this language before you?
Pam.
Yep, that would be Ms. Labonte, the town clerk.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Pam.
Hello.
Hi, Ms. Labonte.
How's everyone doing?
Good. How are you?
Good, good. Hello. I don't see anybody here from the school.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So the language that you sent over to me appears fine to me. Is this what the school has decided?
This is town council, bond council, and school council sent us.
Okay. So my question is, I thought that I'd read in Brian Riley's email about the dollar amount, about not putting the dollar amount in there.
For the debt exclusion.
For the debt exclusion.
The wording, wording doesn't have the dollar.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. So it would be the ballot, the ballot question doesn't have the amount in it, so that is correct. So, I mean, that looks fine to me. It seems as though we've gone through all of the channels. We've spoken with town council, with bond council. It seems to be fine with me.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gasper?
I do have a question. Why would we leave the dollar amount on a ballot question out if people don't know what, what they're voting on? If they haven't been informed, then they just see it. Why would you do that?
What Brian recommended was that we do a commu...
Like an explanation? Is that an explanation of it?
Yes, right, right. A community outreach, because we cannot put, when you see a ballot question for the state elections, you'll notice that it'll say yes means this, no means that, depending on how you vote. You're not allowed to do that with a debt exclusion, because they expect that the town is going to do right by communicating the information out there effectively to the townspeople.
So are we sending out a memo to all registered voters in the town of Acushnet saying it's 4.2?
There are going to be, from my understanding, two public evenings or days that are set aside to have, hold an event for public outreach. I don't know if the school is planning anything else. I've not had any communication with Patrick or the school committee about it.
And if you look at the language for the article, that is subject to change as far as the dollar amount.
Right.
No, I know. I just figured it would say up to, right? That's usually how you do it. Debt exclusion, up to 4.2, or whatever the number may lead.
That's in the article.
I'm just concerned about more people showing up for elections on the ballot and not being informed of what the dollar amount would be, right? Because how many people are watching public outreaches or attending public outreaches, right? What do we have, somewhere around 8,000 registered voters?
Yeah.
It went through the three councils originally. When we put it in, the dollar amount was in, and the up to likely to borrowing, they took it out.
So you're telling me, Pam, that we can't, like, the town clerk's office, a nonpartisan
Yeah.
office couldn't print up a fact sheet, or like, I, 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 we were Mr. Gasper, there's going to be some level of transparency.
Oh, absolutely. I, I agree wholeheartedly. Yes, a fact sheet could be sent. The one thing we have to be very careful about, and we did run into a situation where a memo was sent out from the school committee or from the superintendent's office, that was, it was an ethics violation, because they had notified some individuals that, of the debt exclusion. So we have to be very careful. It's a, it's a fine line that we walk.
I don't want to tell people which way to vote. I just want them to be informed of what that article means at the ballot, right?
Right, right.
I think that's the importance of it.
And a fact sheet is, you know, that is the way to go, definitely, to get that information out there.
Okay. Guess we need to start working on that, because there's not much time.
And just, just for a little bit of peace of mind, the 4.2's already reduced the 3.7 with the grant that they did get from the state.
The green, is that the green communities?
It's a decarbonization grant, half a million dollars. All right, so Mr. Kelly, if you could talk to Patrick, just have him put together as much information as possible. This way, we can get it around to the community, and we'll also have to get a clear timeline of all their public information sessions as well, any joint meetings, and we'll just have to make sure that everybody's aware, post it everywhere we possibly can.
Kim, I would ask, I would ask that you try to figure out the best way that we can post it on our social media page, right? Facebook page, whatever it is, our town webpage, whatever it may be, and have it bang right there, right?
I can work with Sydney. Sydney from your office does handle the social media portion of it, but we can certainly also put it on the website as news and announcements.
I just, Mr. Kelly, you got to make sure before our administrative assistant posts anything on social media, it's proper. That's what I'm saying about you, Ms. Labonte, is to make sure that the language is, is proper before we post something, right?
Sure.
I just don't want our administrative assistant posting things, trying to do the right thing, and then, uh-oh, we're in trouble.
Right. What my recommendation would be is whatever is decided is going to go out to the public. You know, if it's a sheet of paper, that we actually include that in the post. So everyone's getting the same information versus trying to summarize something and missing some real important points.
Okay, very good.
Okay. So my question to you is, because I have to go to print tomorrow for the, the ballot. So will you be voting this, this evening? This question? Because I can't change that verbiage after I submit it.
You can't change it after we vote it.
Exactly. Right, yes, yes, absolutely.
It, Mr. Kelly, it does, it says including, I know it says but not limited to air, environmental, environment quality, and decarbonization improvements, but it's, I think there's like a million dollars of that going to the envelope of the building. So does that need to be included in the article for them to spend whatever amount it was allocated to the envelope of the building now that I just read it?
The debt exclusion ballot question language. All of that information was given to the three sets of councils, and this is the language they came out with.
As long as all three of those people were informed, a million, roughly a million dollars was going towards the building envelope, because it does not talk about that.
But are energy efficient, efficiency improvements, is that like a generic term that would encompass?
It could.
That.
And I know what you're saying, though.
They had...
It's the first time I'm seeing this article.
The more specifics.
They had, well, as you can see, came from council this morning.
The energy services, services contract from the company that they put this together with does list that in their scope of services. So if this is approved this way, and we enter in an energy service contract with the company, that would pretty much seal that up, I would think.
We hope.
There's multiple steps that have to be taken after this one.
That's fine.
On worst case, it comes to find out.
It just says but not limited to.
Yep.
As well, right?
There are a lot of questions that yet have been answered.
Not my lawyer, Hal, on today, so I can't answer most questions. I left that one at home.
This is what Mr. Riley does.
He's from KP?
Yeah.
Yeah, he went to law school with me.
Sorry to hear that. From Mr. Riley.
I'm glad he's so pining rather than me.
All right. So is there a motion to include the following question as reviewed and approved by council on the April 22nd, 2025 town election ballot? Debt exclusion ballot question. Shall the town of Acushnet be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2, so-called the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued in order to pay costs of energy efficiency improvements, including but not limited to air quality, air environment quality, and decarbonization improvements to be made pursuant to an energy services contract, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now that I have the confirmation on that, I will be sending over the warrant for your next meeting for you to approve, and that'll have all of the candidates, the positions for the election.
Okay. Are there any contested, are they all uncontested races?
All, yes, they're all uncontested. I, I actually contemplated coming to you and petitioning you to reduce the hours of the election where there are no contentious races at all. But with the ballot, I feel for the school, it is just that we do the eight, the hours of the 8 to 6, which would be unusual.
Makes sense.
Okay. And anyone that's not going to be around, because that is going to be school vacation, I do want to reach out to everyone and say, get a vote-by-mail ballot or an absentee ballot if they want to vote for, for this either way. It's going to be important that they get to my office before the deadline.
How early can you get an absentee ballot?
You can request an absentee ballot now. Once they come in, once the ballots are printed and we receive them, and we record them, then people can come in and vote in the office absentee. Other than that, it would be the vote by mail. So if people are going to be home and they just choose not to go to the polls on election day, that's not an absentee ballot. An absentee ballot is only if someone has been admitted to a healthcare facility, if it is considered a religious holiday on the day of the election, or you're going to be out of the Commonwealth. Other than that, you would have to vote by mail, which is the new, the new one that was instituted.
You ask for flight tickets or transportation?
No, we don't. Everyone is signing under penalties of perjury.
And that's on a Tuesday?
That is on a Tuesday, yes, April 22nd. And it's also...
The following day.
It's the day after, yes, yes.
But at least we're on a Tuesday now.
Yes, yes, we're consistent with all of the other elections, thankfully.
Correct.
Yes.
All right. Our next meeting will probably be on the first, just to give you a heads up.
April 1st?
Yep.
Okay. I'll be pulling, I actually have the warrant already. I was just waiting for this verbiage, so you'll probably have that in your office tomorrow.
Do you need that electronically just to have it?
This here?
No.
No, that's okay, because you, you sent it to me in the email. I'll take care of that, yeah, but thank you.
Perfect.
Anything else? No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Labonte.
I also see that Aaron is here in the school for Old Colony. Did you need me to stay for that? No, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Mr. Kelly, in terms of the article?
I appreciate it.
I'm going to ask to hold it off on the article, because I have a couple more questions, and I just want to speak to council myself as well, or we can address it at next meeting. That's all right.
You can...
As long as it's before print, right?
Yeah, put it before the warrant's printed, because that's warrant language, not ballot language.
All right. Buzzers Bay Watershed Ride Authorization. Buzzers Bay is doing their annual watershed ride. This is something that they do every year. Generally, you see a map in here, along with sections of where they'll be riding. Just a reminder that they do not close the road. Let's see how much they actually see here.
I'm tired, just looking at the map.
Yeah. It's a pretty long ride, but it does pass through a little section of our town, so we have to authorize it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the 19th Annual Watershed Ride as long as the police chief signs off.
He signed off on it this morning.
Okay.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Senior Veteran Job Fair. Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Chairman, the staff has been looking at various ways to mitigate the potential tax increases that are coming down from these various debt exclusions, especially for two groups, veterans and seniors. And the board has suggested this to various staff members. They've gotten together. We are looking for the board to investigate a veterans' tax work-off program similar to the senior tax work-off program, as well as the Heroes Act, and to also look at some of the exemptions that are now offered. And once the board determines which ways they want to go, the staff would do, in effect, a job fair down at the COA with the veterans' agent, COA director, the assessor, and other members of the staff, and invite the public in to tell them exactly what's available to them, especially if these tax increases go into the thousands for some homes. So this is informational right now, but we would like some direction from the board.
Yeah?
Yes. I, I don't have any problems with veteran work-off program, like the senior and the youth work-off program we've implemented. It's been a great success. I think we, I need a little more time to digest with the Mr. Fish, our veterans' agent on the Heroes Act, but I do know veterans get some, some abatements already, so I'd like just to see what the effective all of those are, but, you know, our veterans are our veterans, right? I'm always there to support veterans.
We are averaging, since this board put in the senior work-off program, and we're funding it through free cash, we're averaging year to year, just about half of, a little more than half is being used, and it goes back into free cash. So there is money there also to fold the appropriation in for the veterans.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, just sort of on this subject, I'd ask that Mr. Kelly spin-ups a couple of job descriptions for, you know, in the selectman's office, specifically, you know, what would be available, but also I've been in touch with John Quinn, who's a former state rep from Dartmouth, who now runs the UMass Dartmouth Law School and their public policy department, and they've got an internship program that they're trying to, you know, that they present to municipalities. So I think as we're looking at how we're going to be carrying out our day-to-day functions and, you know, with budgetary constraints, and this could be one other creative way to look at it, that if we can have, you know, create an internship opportunity, whether it's in our finance department, or the selectman's office, or any of our municipal boards, you know, to do research, or whatever that might be, I think it could be a good opportunity. And also, as we say, like, to grow a bench, right?
Yeah.
Like, that's one thing that I think we need to do, is constantly have people in the rotation. We've done that with Old Colony, with our, with the co-op program, and that's been incredibly successful, and, you know, I think that we can build that out at the higher ed level as well.
Absolutely.
There would be a time issue in this to make sure, because the focus of this would be on helping the seniors and the veterans in this big tax increase that's potentially coming. And so there would be a timeframe for the board to, we'll be coming fairly quickly as it works its way through ballots and town meetings. To, because we'll have to put some articles on town meeting, to, especially the acceptance of the veterans' work-off program, which you haven't accepted yet.
Correct.
Acceptance of that, and then the funding of it.
I think the veterans' work-off program is, is, as far as I'm concerned, get the article done, right?
Agree with that now?
I don't think there's any holdup on that.
Agreed, yeah, put it together?
All right.
And get it approved. And Mr. Fish did put together some information on the Heroes Act for me. But it did come in after the agenda was set, so I wasn't able to bring it up today, but I told him I'd share it with you guys and get it over, but he did put together some options for us. All right. West Island Beach Passes. So I believe they increased it to 150 total. So I believe they increased it to 150 total.
There's some mixed signals inside this packet. It says something about a lottery. I don't remember what we did last year versus what we're doing this year, but I've heard from a number of our constituents saying, you know, how can I be included without the same 100 people getting beach passes from last year? So I don't know what this board wants to do, but I think in, to hold up some level of fairness to our community residents, is maybe if you got one last year, you would be put on hold, and then see if the 150 new people, if we have that list of the 100 from the previous year, and if they're not filled, then we lottery those of 100 incidents, something like that.
Mr. Chairman, can I, I'd like to bring Sidney Rivera into this conversation. She's done a lot of work on this, so maybe, Sidney, I don't know if you want to go up to the podium, but I don't want to put you on the spot, but I also want to give you some shots on this. We've talked about a lottery, you know, a couple other concepts that we're trying to get through the, over the finish line.
Yes, so I've been reaching out to the BPW in Fairhaven, I've been speaking with Becky over there, and so she told me that the town, the town of Fairhaven and the BPW will be giving out 150 passes this year instead of 100 from last year. And it's pretty much up to our discretion how we distribute them. They won't be distributing them, they've invoiced us for 150 passes already upon your approval. So if that doesn't go through, then we won't be paying it, but that's what we have offered to us.
So can you tell us about the lottery that you're trying to create and work?
So I put together a form, an online form, so if people want to be submitted into lottery, they can do that there, or if they don't have access to a computer, or access to be able to submit the form, they can come in person, and we'd be able to do a simulator to pretty much have a spinner, and spin the wheel and see who is able to win that way. That's just an idea as well. And also, they'll be discussing at the end of this month, possibly giving us some passes that we can use as transferable passes, that the town would have to purchase, that we could use at the library potentially.
A lot of people reached out to me about that, if there could be some kind of community pass. And I know our library already does stuff like that for museums, and various other free passes for other things, and I think that'd be nice for even the people that don't win the lottery, so to speak, actually can still have an opportunity to get it. And I was reading through this, and having a level of control where you know where the pass is, and you can make sure you get it back is pretty paramount on that, because you don't want somebody to borrow the pass for the entire summer.
Exactly. So we'll have to work out the kinks and see what works best, but I gave an example of how I think it would work really well, just to have like a three-way ticket stub type of system, to show that this is the, a copy for the library, and then the remaining would go to the resident who's borrowing it. But at the end of the day, it is up to what you decide. So I'm happy to speak with BPW and communicate anything as well, too.
Last year was, it was big, because it was, we didn't have much time to do it, and it was pretty much first come, first served. And there was a lot of people that were upset with it, because they couldn't get out of work or get to the BPW in time. So I can see exactly where you're coming from. There were a lot of people left to work and tried to get there in time, and it was sold out. So there was a lot of back and forth with this. And of course, just like with everything else, no matter what, you're never going to make everybody happy, but I think if we have, when are they releasing the passes?
It's up to us to accept it, the offer's there for us.
Right.
We just have to vote to accept it.
Nobody's going to the beach in the next couple months.
And then what we would do is, you know, you'd have like a registration period, you know, like from next date to whatever, and then that close, that's closed, and then what we would do, we could do, actually, we could kind of have some fun with it, you know, we could do, run the simulator before selectman's meeting, so it's transparent, it's on TV, and this way, you know, Bob Hinckley ends up with seven of them, you know, it's all above board, and...
You know it's a lie?
It's all above board.
You'll know it's a lie, because I don't go to the beach.
So anyway, that's one thing, you know, if you're in a perfect world, I love to say, if you want to be eligible, you're going to go to town meeting, or you're going to go home, but that might be a little too heavy-handed, you know, so...
It's not a bad idea, though.
I was testing out the simulator today, and you did win, Bob, the first winner, so, good job.
Was I the only name in it?
Yeah, you were.
I just think it's, I think it's nice on behalf of the town, though, to recognize how much money we let out in our golf passes, right? And they're up in the ante now, because the offset was dramatic, right? So they're trying to be kind and saying, you know what, that was the cost of Kushner, we'll up the ante a little bit, and make it a little bit fairer, and we'll just keep going. At some point, they're going to say, we can't take anymore, and we'll have to just have golf say, this is the cutoff, whatever, to offset the cost, right? Because we're kind of...
The extra 50 is pretty much a wash.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think it was kind of nice stuff, they even did that, recognized that additional cost that we exalte from outside from golf. So we can have that conversation, and I come in and see you, I'm here all the time, Sidney, we can talk about how this will work.
So maybe what we do is, we just put this on the April, the next meeting's agenda, because then we'll know about the transferable pass business, you know, we'll have a full package. So thank you, Sidney, for your great work.
Thank you. One more question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Is this, just for clarification for me, you said they already invoiced us, or told us these are yours?
Yes.
Does that mean that the residents that do win would pick them up here instead of Fairhaven?
Yes, they would. So we can figure out how we can have people pick them up.
Okay.
But...
I think that's...
So is this more like if we have 300 people, we give a timeline, right? 30 days, I think Mr. Lolo alluded to. And if we have 300 people, it's almost like just we're going to rip off tabs with everybody's name, chuck it in the hat?
Basically.
And then reach in the hat and pull it out, until we get to 150 and say, try again next year? For 150 that didn't get it?
Yeah, I would say so.
Send them to let it out?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And then the little pass thing that you're talking about, how would, like you said, you wanted the whole five of them, right? So how does that five get held? Like, what are you, he's talking about something about the library, and I read something in here about, I'm a little confused with that. Like, if one weekend I want to go, I just show up at the library and see if there's a beach pass available, and I can just go one day on that weekend, and then I have to bring it back to the library and say, here you go, it's, I went my one day, and leave it, now somebody else can go and use that same one again?
Yes, and so, like, when you get a transferable pass, you'll get a fiscal pass from Fairhaven BPW. But, not that I don't trust people, but I would hate to see the one person that ruins it for everyone and keeps the pass and steals it. So I don't believe that they should ever tangibly have the pass as someone who's using it. Instead, you'll get a one-day temporary pass from the library that expires at the end of the day. Does that make sense? So they'll just get a piece of paper that, at the end of the day, throw it away?
That works beautiful.
Just so you know, the town of Fairhaven offers that transferable pass to their residents who have rentals. Like, if you have a property on West Island or Fairhaven that you rent out, like an Airbnb, and you want your renter to be able to go to the beach, that, they have that transferable pass. It is more money, it's $200. It's more money than the regular pass, but I think we can make up for that just by upcharging, you know, what we're going to sell the, you know, the pass to. So we won't be losing any money, and it creates some additional flexibility for our...
So those, so those five passes, that's good for the whole season, right?
Yes.
So only one pass, because you showed us like six different things, but that was just given an example of like that one-day thing. So those five passes available every, I guess, every day out of the seven days a week. Some people want to go to the beach on Monday through Friday, right? Not just Saturday and Sunday, right?
I would say that they should, for fairness for everyone, they should be able to go to the library each day that they want to use the pass. Just so it's a fair chance that people don't hog the pass either, at that point.
Well, that's something we need to get through, is it's only good for one day. So if I go down and get my pass, and I say, I want to go to my family on Monday, I just, that's it, it's good for Monday. Tuesday, they could reissue that pass to another resident.
Yes.
Right? And that, those five would stay active throughout the whole season?
Yes.
Right? Okay, cool, sounds good.
So I think that, because I did write this model a little while ago, and I did speak with the BPW this morning about it as well, if we would be giving or selling the 150 passes in total, not the 145, and then we'd be purchasing an additional two to five passes that are the $200 mark that are transferable. So it would be...
That's fine, that's fine.
So just for clarification purposes.
Yeah, that's good.
One more question?
Yes.
Did Fairhaven keep track of the names of all the people that ended up with passes last year?
I believe so. They do.
Just for some fairness, too, if you can see if they have a list of those names, and this way, when we decide which way we want to move forward, we have all the options possible. So if like Mr. Gasper said, if you got one last year, it's time to let somebody else have a chance at it. And this way, at least we can know if they're registering, this person got it, we can be forthcoming and say, listen, we'll put you in a second chance. If we don't get all the way through this, then we can add to you. So this way, people that didn't get a chance last year can have a fair shot at it, too.
Okay, makes sense. And just to clarify the discount at once, because I know we did have residents that paid the full price.
Correct, discount at once, yep.
Yeah, just the discount, the first 100, discount once, right?
Perfect.
Cool.
All right.
Excellent, thank you, Sidney.
Ambulance bill of bacon. Keep filing. Well, we do this fairly often, not that often, I don't want to make it seem worse than it is, but I'm assuming this is typical like we do every year?
Yeah, this is a typical request. This actually comes from our billing company, Comstar. We have several agreements with Medicare, Medicaid, and the government with respect to our ambulance billing. As a condition of our contract with Medicare, any unpaid portion from Medicare of these ambulance bills cannot be sent to any other type of collection, it has to be written off. So that's just what these two bills are.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve an abatement for the ambulance run number 23-78319 in the amount of $1,910.32. And I'll make a motion to approve the abatement for the ambulance run number 24-153748 in the amount of $1,723.20.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, chief. All right, Mr. Polanski, you are up.
Sorry, did I knock it out?
Did it knock out?
I'm sorry, I don't know if I hit it by accident or something.
I don't think so.
Sidney, can you tap the screen and see if it will work?
Yeah. I think, try unplugging and replugging it back in. Oh.
So, good afternoon, and thank you for having us. First, I want to echo the sentiments and thank Maurice for his 16 years of service. He headed our budget subcommittee for many years, probably up until last year.
Probably also certainly, probably over 10 years, I think.
And has been a wonderful part of our community, so thank you. I want to thank the select board for their recent recognition of our basketball team as well. We appreciate that. We typically start with our mission. Our mission is to prepare and support students for the global demands of society and the workforce through rigorous vocational, technical, and academic courses. This foundation is established within a safe environment that values students' interests, needs, and diversity, fostering responsible, productive citizens in our community. Sarah Griffith is our business manager, she's typically with me, she sends her regrets, she's under the weather with whatever's going around. I'll jump right in. These are just some application trends we like to share every year. It shows you the total of 2025 applications at 79. And it shows you the trends starting, dating all the way back to 2018. You can see in this current year, the total number of students that were accepted as of March 3rd, which was just recently, was a total of 60 students from an application pool of 79. There's a lot happening in vocational education. For those who might not be informed, right now at the state level, there's, there are some regulations that have been put out that are proposing a lottery instead of a merit-based admission system. And so Docket 4510 was released yesterday, and it's a motion to ask them to pause that thought and to reconsider the approach. I think that it could be detrimental to a lot of different facets of what we do, and we'll see where that goes. But this could, it could tell a very different story at a later point about vocational education. The fiscal implications of our current budget. Our long-term debt of over $500,000 was retired in the FY '26 budget, which is good news, and a vocational instructor was cut. A request for a co-op coordinator in the amount of $110,000 was also cut from the FY '26 request following a February 24th meeting with our member towns. During that meeting, we heard from a number of our towns about the difficulties they've had on a financial level, and so as a result of that, these changes were made. Our FY '26 budget consists of a 4.12% increase, of which 2.93% is attributed to insurance increases. We'll be looking at our insurance to see if there's a better plan that has a better fiscal impact on the district, but that takes some time. It's not something we could do overnight. Our insurance increases were approximately 19% for our active and 22% for retirees this year. Those are high. We had inflation associated with supply lines in energy in a 3% coma in accordance with negotiated contracts. The budget preparation begins with the release of the governor's budget. For those who aren't familiar, I know this is televised, so I'd just like to share it with our communities as well. I do know that our select board is familiar. But the governor's recommendations were released earlier this year, and Old Colony did not see major increases in Chapter 70 funding. We have shared our recommendations as part of a draft budget, and like I said prior, met with representatives from our member towns on February 24th to seek insight relative to the preliminary draft budget. As a result of that meeting, the significant adjustments in front of you were made. We're mindful of the challenges faced by our member towns and appreciate the opportunity to work collaboratively with you. We do do a significant amount of research when we create our budget. We try to gain a strong understanding of what our member towns are doing, and we try to make sure that we react accordingly. That's a quick overview. We have a line-by-line breakdown of the budget for you, and that has been handed out to everybody. If there are questions, I'd be more than happy to answer questions to the best of my ability.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, that would one quick question. What are you over net, minimum net school spending?
Let me pull my... Looks like we're at $1,4468.
Is that for the, that's for this current?
That's the additional contribution for the current.
For the proposed budget?
For the proposed budget, yes, totality.
Because I was looking at some information, it looked like fiscal year '24 was $1,048.59 over required net school spending. Then it looks like what we budgeted in '25 was $12,869.421, and the state's requirement was $11,934.36. So that'd be $1,775,995 over net school spending. That's why I asked that question.
Yeah, I apologize, I'm reading from the paper I have right in front of me.
That's fine.
So roughly 1.5, right?
Yeah.
So you give us the breakdown sheet, your draft membership town assessments, and fiscal year 2025 assessments. Kushner's looking at $2,896.040.
Correct.
And the state is saying, I believe the next line down, fiscal year 2025 minimum contribution, the state's saying Kushner needs to spend $2,123,499.
That's correct.
So on the next sheet you had presented, it says fiscal year '26 budget roll-up report? And then you have like all the big line items, which I couldn't make sense of looking at your budget and trying to figure out what gets bundled into each, like district leadership and admin and all that stuff. So I did the math on each line item, and your budget's up $1,123,373. That's really what your budget's up. And the only reason why it's showing an increase of $593,000... And the only reason why it's showing an increase of five hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars, which I would commend you if that's really what your increase was. But the increase is really one million one hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-three, because the debt service was reduced by five hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars. However, that debt service was agreed upon by municipalities for a certain period of time.
Correct.
Right? And then what essentially what we've done now is we've just kept that for in perpetuity.
That's, that, that was not kept in perpetuity this year. It was retired, to your point, and that was a lifesaver. Had it not been retired, we would have been up at about nine percent.
So the budget is still up one million one twenty-three, three seventy-three. And again, that difference in, in your debt service, which is five hundred and twenty-nine thousand six thirty-three, which it was reduced, that's now being kept in perpetuity. Because now it's used for regular budgetary purposes, not debt service anymore, which should have retired this year.
The debt, the debt service was taken out of the budget, to your point.
That's right. It was taken out as debt service is put back in as budgetary items. So it's permanently built into your budget.
Well, if you look at where our increases fall, be it insurance, right, what it may be.
Yeah, I've done all that now too. I'm just, I'm just making a point that the budget is not up five hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and forty, which it appears to be based on this worksheet. The budget is truly up one million one hundred and twenty-three, three seventy-three. So you're right, if we didn't have that debt service retiring, it would, it would wipe us out.
Right.
It's, it's over half a million dollars, but you did take debt service theoretically. You took debt service and you built it into the budget.
No, we took debt, we did not reallocate for the purpose of backfilling debt services, if that's what you're saying, no.
Okay, let me put it, let me put it a little bit different perspective. Old Colony's budget is up one million one hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars. That is correct, right?
Yeah, we have, we were at, last year, we were at fourteen, four oh six, two nine eight. This year, we're at fifteen, zero three eight.
Sorry, say those two numbers again.
The two, twenty-twenty-five revised budget is fourteen, four oh six, two nine eight. This year's first draft is at fifteen million thirty-eight.
That's, that's fine, but if you back out the numbers from twenty-five to twenty-six, the budget's up one million one hundred and twenty-three, three seventy-three. That's the actual increase in your budget. It's only because you got rid of the debt service that looks smaller, from a budget perspective.
I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying.
So what my point, my point is gonna be is you gotta really look at that a little bit better, right? And you said you're a million five or whatever it is. I come up with a little bit higher number over required net school spending. You're spending at a four-grade school, eighth through twelfth, and I understand it's a vocational school, but you're not buying equipment every year, that's for sure. And the town's spending as a whole, including a K through eight and including, I think it's additional two hundred high school students in the school department's budget, right? So we're capturing another two hundred high school students in our local public schools budget that we're paying for. And the town's budget goes up roughly one point three. So your budget just from eighth grade to twelfth grade is going up equivalently the same amount as the whole town's budget's going up. That's insane to me. That's, that's ludicrous. And I think if you talk to the majority of people out there in, in the private sector or the public sector, wherever they are, they would say, that sounds a little bit crazy. Running a budget a million two over, year over year, when a town's basically doing the same thing. And that's including public safety, all our fixed costs, and our K through eight school with an additional two hundred, roughly two hundred students going to Faven and New Beffet High, captured in that school department's budget. That's, I don't understand how you're spending, let's just call it over a million dollars, easily over a million dollars, year over year. When we're spending roughly that as a whole town, year over year.
I hear what you're saying. I think that what we are looking at is the major costs associated with our increases are based in insurance. When you, when you look at, when you look at the, the big bubble of this budget, it has to do with COLA and insurance. And in terms of where we've negotiated and what we've done to try and keep numbers at a reasonable level, and we continue to do so. And I share your concerns, trust me when I tell you. But we negotiated a three-three-three with our teachers.
Administration did as well?
Yep.
Which we could argue is, is high for administration, especially with some of the salaries and, and where they're at, right? I noticed inside, well, you wanna just jump to that, that conversation real quick, is you jump inside your budget.
Yeah.
And I noticed that, um, you know, business administrators, superintendents and things of the like, they all got three percent, but they're very high salaries, right? So, and I'm not gonna name names, but let's just say arbitrarily speaking, and I won't use anybody identified inside of this budget line item. Somebody had a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars getting a three percent raise, that's a five thousand dollar raise, right? And then I look down this little list over here and I see you got salary, school secretary is zero. That salary's forty thousand dollars, right? And I think there's a few other ones in here that are zeroed out.
Oh, we're in negotiations for those right now, so those have not been determined yet.
So my point is, three percent for somebody making forty thousand dollars versus three percent of somebody making a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars is huge. You could give four people their forty thousand dollars a three percent raise, and it's only gonna equal one raise for one person making a hundred and sixty-five at three percent. So we can't continue this path of the high earners, the highest earners, getting the same three percent just because we gave it to a school teacher. That's maybe seventy or eighty thousand dollars, they get a three percent, so we say, let's just give everybody a three percent too. Because that disparity, we talked about this years ago, as a community. And there was something going on with the state where, you know, equitable and all that stuff, and saying we gotta, we gotta change that, and you can't have those big differences in pay ranges, but we're still on that same track where we just keep letting it inflate, and that disparity's growing greater and greater by that percentage, right? So what makes somebody think that they should get a five thousand dollar raise? And then the person at the lower end of the spectrum should only get a twelve hundred dollar raise? Would you think it'd be fair to say that you might wanna look at that for dollar terms instead of just looking at it as percentage terms? Because yeah, it sounds great when you use a percentage term. I only got three percent like the other person did, but we don't talk about the dollar consequence, right?
We actually do. With, with all due respect, when we negotiate, we look at norms and we look at surrounding districts, and we pull comps. And we actually look at where we fall in terms of those comps. We highlight on a spreadsheet means, medians and modes. And we identify whether we're falling in the middle, somewhere near the bottom, up toward the top. And I can tell you with absolute confidence that we do not fall near the top in any of those categories. And that, and that adjustment has been made, so I only offer that because I agree with you and I do think we should be looking.
I could understand your perspective and the school committee's perspective. When you look at that, you want, you wanna be competitive, right? To a degree, right?
Correct. We agree with you.
So you, you have to be competitive to a degree, right? But it doesn't mean that somebody at a hundred and sixty-five should just go, yeah, I'm taking that three percent raise, get my five thousand, when you just talked about one layoff or two layoffs or whatever it may be, so. If people would stop foregoing raises and say, you know what, I'm already making enough money, maybe I don't need to take that raise and, you know, instead of doing that layoff, right? For an example. I, I mean, that's, that's where we're at, I mean.
And there are nuance, there are, there are nuance.
Definition of insanity is just because other people from other towns, and I've said this a number of times in this community. Just because some, somebody in another town wants to pay somebody two hundred thousand dollars, go right ahead. That doesn't mean we're gonna do that.
Right.
Right? And if everybody keeps playing that game, where are we at? Right? That's not leadership, right?
No, I think we do a very good job of identifying where norms are. I think we do a very good job.
I've never done a comparison with yours, versus what you pay versus, you know, I think it's, was it Plymouth?
Bristol Plymouth?
Bristol Plymouth.
I would encourage you to take a deeper look at those things.
And things, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying there's not a disparity, right? I just think that there's gotta be that conscience when we're in these budget constraints.
I will tell you, Selectman Gaspro, with all due respect, if folks were to take a deeper look at those, those numbers, I think they would be more than celebratory in their response.
It's, but it doesn't, again, I'll go back to what I'll say is, just because somebody's being dumb somewhere else, doesn't mean I'm gonna be dumb here, right? And just because everybody keeps doing the definition of insanity, doesn't mean it's gonna work for us. This is, we should be really talking about sustainability.
We echo your conversation, so everything you're saying is what we echo.
We, we're not sustainable anymore. I think we can all acknowledge that as adults, right? Where we've gone, where government has gone, let me just say me, because I'm, I'm usually very financially prudent when I'm making financial decisions, right? But where the government has gone is beyond me. Public sector, private sector, I mean, it's just ludicrous, right? And I talk about this with the President of the United States, right? He gets paid four hundred K, what about fifty K and stipends for la di da stuff, right? The President of the United States of America gets paid four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, let's call it that, okay, to run a country. And we have town administrators, superintendents making in little dinky towns like this, two hundred grand? Does anybody think that makes any sense? That's my question.
So I will tell you, with the Chair of our Budget Subcommittee sitting next to me and the former Chair of our Budget Subcommittee sitting next to her, and the Chair of our Negotiating Subcommittee sitting with me, that these are the exact, not anymore, the exact conversations that we have. We echo your sentiments and we are conservative in the work that we do.
Good. So, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I just, I won't go through, and I did do all the math from your budgets, Mr. Polanski. And I've seen all your changes. I do have a question about one of your moves. You, you moved from information, I guess it says MGT Technology. Line item, I think it's fourteen fifty, and it was zeroed out, so I circled it. But then I noticed you moved that to page eight. So that line item was a negative sixty-four oh thirty-nine, and then you moved that salary, what I noticed once I got further through.
Yeah.
You moved that salary to page eight, and you also added a position. So you talk, terms of talking point up here of, you know, whatever position you eliminated. In a tough fiscal year like we're in right now, it's not the time to be adding positions. You made a cut, now you're adding a position. So you, just that, that technology coordinator ended up over here, it was a move from page two. And then you added a forty-five thousand dollar salary, and that budget line item actually increased a hundred and twenty-six thousand five forty-five, which is huge. So when you say, when you look at these budgets, you can't do anymore, I, I don't, I don't think that's true. I don't know what the, what the need is of that added assistant position right now when you say you made cuts. And I do notice that your insurance line items went up three hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty, and then your retiree health insurance went up a hundred and ten thousand. So I see that that's a, a big chunk of the money. And I think for the most part, for the rest of your budgets, you've done a really good job. And I, and I know, and I know health insurance, you know, which, you know, I guess maybe you should have been looking at that a, a little bit further back, but just to understand, you know, insurance increase, Mr. Kelly does it on behalf of the town, and he usually has a pretty good inkling ahead of time, way ahead of time of what they're talking about from the insurance group, right? Saying, you know, eh, you know? He'll usually come into us, like everybody does, and, and he'll give us the spiel, fifteen percent, and then when it comes in at ten to twelve percent, we look like heroes. Because it only went up ten to twelve percent. But when I say only went up ten to twelve percent, that's still a couple hundred thousand dollars, right? It's a big nut, right? And it hurts. Fixed costs are killing us, quite honestly. So that's why I keep, when I talk about sustainability, same deal with health insurance, right? Pensions, retirement system, killing us. When do we say we can't continue funding that, instead of just saying whatever it takes? I, I don't know how to answer, beyond my pay grade, I guess, for now.
So the tech director was moved simply because of the function of where it falls in the budget, so the position cut. But it was not the position cut, just so you know.
No, I know.
It just moved to a different line.
I see.
And then the tech assistant was a new position created to assist our technology director who single-handedly deals with the entire district. So that is a new position at forty-five thousand dollars created to assist the tech director. One hundred percent. Probably long overdue, to be quite honest, given the work that that person does.
So I'm just saying, because I noticed that budget went down sixty-four, and then this one went up a hundred and twenty-six, right? So it's a double.
The cut was a vocational teaching staff.
What's, what's that?
The cut made from the budget was ninety-eight thousand and change, and it was a member of the vocational teaching staff.
I'm sorry for that person.
We have to, we have.
I mean, our schools made cuts, we've made cuts. It hurts. Can you just talk about the transportation? Because you've got a bunch of different transportation lines in here as well, right? You've got one transportation athletic, ninety thousand dollars, and then you have one in here for transportation, field trips and events, thirty thousand dollars, up from twenty.
Yeah.
So what's the deal with all these multitudes of transportation?
Sure, so there's transportation that comes in many forms. Transportation for athletics is kept as a separate line. We have transportation for field trips when students are off-site for respective transportation needs, whatever they may be regarding a field trip. If they're going to council on aging, if they're going to a certain exhibit somewhere, if they're doing work in a certain town. Those costs are written into our transportation, and then we have a regular transportation on Chapter Seventy-One.
So your salary co-op and emissions coordinator seems to be a new position as well. Zero line items, twenty grand.
That was taken, we had originally identified the position of a co-op coordinator. Our vocational coordinator currently does the work of two administrators. If you look at other districts of similar size, many have a vocational coordinator or a co-op coordinator. We thought it would make sense to create a co-op coordinator. When we had our February twenty-fourth budget, we took that off the table. And we created a stipend for someone who will be able to assist in some capacity, but it will not be a full-time co-op coordinator. It just did not seem to, for the time it was right.
So if we can get back to the white side.
I do have a question though, while we're on that. Just, just briefly, that co-op program, how many jobs are placed, like how many, you're offhand, I've seen some of the.
Over fifty percent of our juniors and seniors go out on co-op. And they have the opportunity to earn while they learn. They bring in close to a half a million dollars.
Now, listen to what I was looking for.
What, what, what was the comment you just made?
They're able to earn while they learn.
No, what was the comment that you just made about bringing in a half a million dollars?
They bring, they earn for themselves.
Oh, oh, yeah, well, that program's been going, I mean, I'm a graduate of co-op, right from me.
You're familiar.
I, I mean, I was the first junior in my class to go up, yeah, I'll brag a little bit, right? But it's nothing different than what's going on thirty, thirty-four years ago, so it's, it's like, it's not something new.
I was explaining.
I asked the question, I think it's a good date.
It's not something new, it's, we've been doing this, Colony's done this for, since it's opened.
Yes, and it's grown dramatically. I, I'm, I'm very proud of where we brought it. It's grown dramatically.
Yeah, no, it's great that the students get to go out on co-op, learn different aspects of that shop, oh, in the real world, right? Before they actually land in the real world, right? It gives them a little bit of an eye opener. It also gives them a flavor of, maybe as my middle brother did, maybe this isn't for me, right? He was, he also went through the same shop, machine shop, as all three of those boys went through, right? My brother's still in it, as you know, he's, he receives a lot of co-op students from Old Colony for his shop, right? AccuDynamics is the name of that company. And then my middle brother was like, yeah, you know what, it's safe for me, and he went off to college, right? So, you know, some people, I think that's why co-op's a great thing for students, right? Is to figure out what do they want. You know, they might be in high school saying, yeah, this is what I wanna do, and then they get out, it's a little bit too late. But at least if you put them in the real working world, they can refocus in their senior year and say, maybe this, you know, I'm gonna start not worrying about doing that anymore. They'll still do the co-op because they want to earn a paycheck, right, instead of going to school for two weeks, but.
All of them end up in full-time jobs.
It gives them a better plan to go to college, right? So one thing on this sheet that you always give us every year about our percentage, you know, the total fiscal budget, fifteen million bucks, and then you give us a cherry sheet. What the state's lacking and giving us, right? The one thing I noticed about this sheet from prior years is transportation fund offset. There is zero dollars there, and last year there was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Why?
What page are you on?
I'm on the sheet that you always give us, Aaron. It looks, it looks like that. Aaron?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
So there's nothing in there, and we always have money there, and we know we always get reimbursed for transportation, and we know that you like to budget, you know, only a certain percentage of your reimbursement. So why, because that number, that, if that number was three hundred and fifty, I forget what it was the year before. So why, because that number, that number was three hundred and fifty, I forget what it was the year before that, call it two hundred or whatever that number was, why isn't there a number in that this year? Where did that money go? That money's always there, always has been there, and this year it is zero dollars.
I'm not, I'll have to ask Sarah that question. I'm looking at this.
Because that would dramatically reduce the assessments, right? If you used a decent enough number. I'll give you an example, if you, so we're thirty-five percent, right? Call us thirty-three percent. If you used three hundred thousand, three hundred fifty last year, it shouldn't be too much below that number. That would reduce our assessment by a hundred thousand dollars.
I'm seeing this where you're referring to right now, on the bottom. And I'll have to ask her what that's about. I'll find out for you.
So there's always money there, I got history of these reports.
Right.
Right?
Sure.
And we all, and we all know, what's your transportation, a million and change?
Yeah.
Your transportation, total cost is one point one four two, right?
Yeah.
Total cost of transportation. And your reimbursement rate is very good, according to the state. I've done that analysis for many years. Some years you get eighty-two percent, some years you get ninety-six percent. So, and we talked about this last time, right? So where's that money go when you don't? I think that's.
Transportation's a revolving account. Chapter seventy-one, transportation would be a revolving account.
So that's fine, but that part of goal is somewhere, right?
It can only be used for transportation, to your point. Yes.
But your transportation cost is saying what it is, so where's that money going, right? There's leftover every year, Aaron, you're getting reimbursed. And that, you're charging the town a million, let's just use simple math. You're charging the towns a million, you're getting reimbursed seven hundred and fifty, you have a seventy-five percent reimbursement rate. You're getting seven hundred and fifty thousand the following year back, but you're still charging the same amount next year. Where's that quarter of a million dollars going? It can't just keep getting stuffed into a revolving account.
No, it's carried over as an offset.
I think that's, I think, I think you usually plug a number into this.
Yeah, I'll have to ask her again.
That blank line item, I think that's where you carry that percentage over, year over year, from reimbursement.
I will find out from our, that's tomorrow with that.
Because you can't just carry and keep it in a revolving account. Right? So how many revolving accounts do you have at Old Colony? You must have multitude of revolving accounts.
Well, we have a transportation revolving account. And we have revolving accounts for student activities, right?
How about shops? Do you have, do you have revolving accounts set up for each one of your shops?
Productivity in the shops.
So when you go out, you know, carpentry, we see you out building sheds, I think you did one at a schools, public schools, a little while back. You do all kinds of work like that, right? You can charge for it, and that money will go into, that should be used to decrease the budget.
No, you don't take from your revolving to decrease your operating. Because it's, you don't know what's gonna come in and out of your revolving. That should never be used to offset your operating. It's using asset funds for your operating. It's taboo.
Well.
Because you can't.
You added twenty-five thousand dollars to your stabilization account, right?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand.
You added seventy-five. So what is, what is that versus your E and D, E and D account?
So the seventy-five thousand dollars in stabilization is gonna be used to fund the vote, as part of our building project.
You're gonna use what to what?
We are required, as a town, as a school, to fund the votes in our member towns. And that is not coming from an operate, that does not.
That's my law.
That's by law.
But you're charging us for it. You built it into the budget.
That comes from a stabilization fund that we have created the offset for.
Yeah, but you charged an extra seventy-five thousand dollars to do it. So you're not paying for it, we're paying for it. All you're doing is backdooring how we're paying for it. You're just saying, okay, I'm only gonna bill you directly, but I'm gonna up my stabilization account, build it into my budget. I'm gonna put seventy-five thousand dollars, without a time believing five comedians is gonna be seventy-five thousand dollars. And we're a third of that operation, so we're paying a twenty-five for other towns to go out and you pay for their ballot questions? That sounds a little whacked out to me.
The seventy-five thousand dollars that we've allocated for stabilization was originally going to be a larger, I call it seventy-five thousand dollars, and it's the equivalent of the offset that we're talking about. But the seventy-five thousand dollars actually came as a recommendation from somebody who said, you have a large number of debt being retired, you should always fund your stabilization. That's what, that's the, that's the advice we received.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I said a lot, but there was a lot to be said.
It's true. You actually asked a bunch of the questions I was gonna ask. I'm gonna just touch back on this funding of the ballot vote, just for clarification. So in this budget, our portion is seventy-five thousand dollars to fund the ballot question.
No, your portion is not seventy-five thousand dollars.
So this is our, this is our budget.
No, that's, that's the totals.
That's the total.
Total school budget.
Seventy-five divided by the five community towns, based on our percentages.
Correct. You're a third of that seventy-five thousand dollars, if you wanna look at it that way. That's our cost. So when they fund seventy-five thousand dollars into stabilization, if we're a third, we're just a few percentage points above, we're twenty-five grand of that number.
Correct, okay.
The cost to fund the vote was forecasted at approximately fifteen thousand dollars per town. That's what we were told we should budget. We had originally put that into the budget. We pulled that out of the budget. We had also put in an offset for stabilization. We kept an offset for stabilization. And we pulled what was originally in a line called School Committee Supplies out. If that makes sense, to answer your question.
No, I mean, I've gone through this up and down, and I understand, I understand the financial constraints that the town has, right? So that's the lens that I look at it through. And I know, also, having had the opportunity to work with you guys over the last couple of years, understand the rigorous process that you go through, you know? But, you know, I think there's, we're in a position where we've gotta take a critical, critical look at everything, you know? And so if that means going through this a couple of times, then that's sort of the process, you know?
So obviously, I would tell you straight out of the gate, and I've been involved with Old Colony for a long time, as you know, and Shirley knows as well, just so everybody knows. Shirley Bork has been on the committee far longer than what I've ever dreamt of doing. I was there from two thousand five to ten when I was a FinCon member. And Shirley is one of the most intelligent individuals you could ever meet when it comes to schools, right? She's phenomenal. She's always been phenomenal. And I thank you for that work that you've done over the years for Old Colony. And on behalf of the five member towns, Shirley, you're an incredible individual. It's just, it's extremely difficult, as Mr. Warner just said, we're looking at an increase, you know, I think it's three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. I honestly, I wouldn't say I accept this budget. I know that your fixed costs have gone up, but I'm dying to know about that missing number that's at the bottom, because that's a big number.
Sure.
And I think that it changes the dynamics a lot for all of us, right? And especially our member towns. And I get it, you know, the budget's up one point, roughly one point two million, just under one point two million. And we're gonna do a better job of keeping that number below that, right? Because if it wasn't for that debt exclusion, where the hell would we be at right now? You'd be laying off five people, six people, whatever it may be, right? And that's where we're at. I mean, we've, we've been sitting at the desk, talking about these things, the local school department's done it. We're looking at positions right now where we have vacancies, and we're saying to ourselves, how do we do this a different way, right? We're trying to recreate ourselves, in other words, and that's really what it's all about. Not create new positions, not just pay higher salaries, it's, let's look at the job function and see what we can do. And can we merge that in and get away with paying somebody a few extra thousand bucks to take on those additional responsibilities? And save thirty, forty thousand dollars doing it, right?
That's what we've attempted to do with some of these solutions here, because, like you said, you can only do so much. You can't, you know, there's a finite pool of money. We understand that.
So if you could get that answer for that, I think it's transportation, right? Why that, why that's left out? And again, you did use, I wrote my note right here. I said why zero last year was three hundred and fifty K. And I know the year before that was pretty substantial, it wasn't three hundred and fifty. I would say it was probably like two hundred, I have that paperwork as well.
Sure.
So there's always a substantial, hundreds of thousands in that line. And again, that would reduce the town's assessment to a more feasible number.
If I remember correctly, the rural, rural town designation impacts transportation, right? If I remember correctly in that conversation with Mr. Sylvia, don't quote me, but, and I'll look on it, but that's why, you know, we're, the question that we're trying to figure out a way to shoehorn ourselves into that rural town designation, right?
They get a strong reimbursement, though. I mean, it's not consistent, I mean, I got the chart, it's, you've done really well. I mean, you can complain about eighty-five and ninety percent reimbursement, that's phenomenal in my eyes. You can't expect.
You're never gonna get what they promised years ago. That's, that's a reality. But I, I think the reality is that, you know, I see what you see, so I have the same question.
You should, it's like a giant goose egg sitting in front of us.
I'm looking at it and I.
And as soon as I looked at this spreadsheet, I said, that's a problem. And then I just started breaking down numbers off of it after that, right?
It could be a huge.
I learned from the best, I learned from Shirley, right?
That could be, that could be a big lifesaver, let's see.
Again, I'll just keep talking about our percentage, even if that number's two hundred, right? There's sixty Gs off. Sixty Gs is a lot of money for us right now.
Sure.
We're scraping. We're gonna talk about some new little Mickey Mouse budgets, right? What are we gonna cut? Five hundred bucks off this budget, fifteen hundred bucks off that budget? If that's what we're into right now? That's what we're into right now, right? I mean, every five hundred, a thousand equals something in the end.
Yeah, we know what matters. We're listening.
And I mean, that's, we have four contracts that have to be negotiated. And I don't know if we'll get that done by the end of the year, but can you imagine that impact too, right? To the budget?
We can.
Sustainability is what we all need to focus on, right? And figure out how do we sustain this going forward, right? And reinventing ourselves might be one of them. But I really think that the, you know, the salaries and the health insurance and the pension costs, and we gotta really look at that differently, right? We had a conversation with our state reps, and I said, the reason why you're not gonna do anything is because you're part of the problem, right? They're in, they're entrenched in that pension system. But in realistic terms, nobody deserves to make that kind of money in retirement, right? There's plenty of people busting their butt year round for forty, fifty years. They're gonna get Social Security making thirty-five, forty grand a year, and you're getting somebody in the municipal sector banging, you know, even let's just talk about a hundred grand a year. They're gonna get eighty thousand dollars in retirement versus somebody else making thirty-five, maybe forty, if they're lucky?
Sure.
Come on. That's, that's where things have gone out of control, right? They should, they should, should have thought about capping things a long time ago, right? Make whatever you want, but this is the cap that you can earn in a pension.
I think we've done a, you know, again, I'll just stand by the fact that when it comes to those types of things, I think we've done a good job leading that charge.
Pensions are killing us, the taxpayers. Right? Healthcare costs is killing us too, right? I mean, a lot of family plan in the town, what is it, twenty-five, twenty-eight grand nowadays for a family plan? Think about that. What? And then you go to a doctor, and they're like, yeah, that's not covered. How? Right? You're breaking me. And, and you know, it's, I'll spin it around a different way, because I think there's a lot of intelligent people in the room, right? As you think about it this way, is we want the best for our kids, obviously, right? The problem becomes is when education in, let's just use your school, because I'm talking about Old Colony, the cost per student gets so high, taxes have to go up to reflect, to cover that budget cost, right? There's a, there's a time when our family can't afford to live in a cushion no more. Now they're not able to go to Old Colony and fulfill their last three years of high school, because they can't afford the taxes in the town that they live in. Whether it's a cushion in Cabo, Lakeville, wherever it is, right? So you gotta really think about all of that, right? When we think about, oh, it's for the kids, yeah, I understand that, we don't want, you know, the best for our kids. But there are a lot of families out there that are that close to not making it, right? And if they have kids, think about what we're doing to those families. That's, that's just a thought I'll leave you with. Because I've had that conversation with a number of families here in this community, and elsewhere as well. And it hurts when I have that conversation, because I understand it, right?
Sure. We know they're big ask.
All right, yeah, if you can find that information from Mr. Gaspar and us, we appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you for the kind words.
You're always welcome.
Maurice, thank you very much. Enjoy retirement.
What you got? Nice. You're five years behind. Thanks, Mo.
We have some small unchanged miscellaneous reserve fund.
So. My problem, my problem right now is.
I'm not looking for about.
Right, because that's my problem, right? Again, we're gonna go back to what we just talked about, is, is we're gonna be scraping nickels and dimes, right? And if you're looking at what you want, from my honest opinion, depending on where we are in deficit, then they're all, they're, all of it's on the table, and every nickel counts.
Yep.
So I know.
Same as last year.
I know things have been presented to FinCon, right? I don't, I'm not necessarily agreeing with it, I think it's good for them to get a first glance at budgets to say, this is where department heads are coming in. But ultimately, the budget's the Board of Selectments, and I think we're gonna have some action to do.
Well, you know, I always preface my remarks by whichever committee I'm talking to by saying, it's the Board of Selectments. And for the last two years, I've been saying that there'll be many iterations of the Board of Selectments budget. Because the Board of Selectmen are mandated to present a balanced budget to the town meeting. And last year we rolled quarters, this year we're rolling pennies.
And last year, we had a couple of budgets, I'll just name them right out, Public Safety, couple of, one particular line item, each one of our fire and EMS and police was underfunded. So we gotta make that back up. That hurts, but we gotta do it eventually. So I don't know, Mr. Chairman, what we're doing, I mean.
I just presented.
I've already identified the money, but if we're just gonna look at it and say, you know what, it is what it is.
I, I present these to the board as budgets that are unchanged and are not large. You can go through every budget and cut it five hundred here, a thousand there.
Correct.
You're not gonna get to what we need to look at. And until the school comes in with its, its budget, you're looking at an increase of three hundred and approximately fifty thousand dollars with Old Colony. And I've got a revenue increase of a five hundred thousand dollars. And that does not even take into account fixed costs. And you look at what Old Colony just told you their fixed costs were as far as health insurance, as far as their retirees' insurance. I think those increases are abysmal. As you know, I offered to help Old Colony with their insurances, but they figured that that might be something for another year. I am going to ask Mr. Polanski, just, I know that DESI terminology is different than municipal terminology is, but I would like to know the total balance in the stabilization account.
It should be available online, no?
Oh, just.
I've been looking at.
That and the DNA, I'd like to know. Yeah, no, I get it. But.
You get that information relatively easy, right?
Yep, I would think so.
They don't have a choice but to give it to us, right? And if, if you need the finance committee to do it, it's in our charter. They make a request, you have to give them the information to the FinCon, so. They make a request. You have to give them the information to the FinCon, so I'm sure you're...
Oh, Aaron and I talked, so it'll be fine.
Look, he's, the budget, I went through the whole budget. It wasn't like it was terrific, right? I mean, outside some of the salary increases for the higher earners like I talked about, but their insurance costs, those, just the retirees and the regular insurance is up four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, right? It's almost fifty percent of the increase. It's huge.
And, and... Operating properly, your insurance accounts with the proper stop loss and everything else, it should be half that.
It's a big number.
I think the Medicaid, Medicare one went up, well, the unemployment, I'm sorry, went up dramatically too.
Yeah, that I don't understand because if they're expecting that many layoffs, but usually...
They did two or one.
Usually it's, it's static year to year and it might vary a couple thousand, not that much.
That variance is huge. But anyways, wait, look, it's his first go around with us, right? So it was good. We, he heard everything and he, I'm sure they're gonna go back. And he looked, they left out a big number, right? I mean, that was a, I don't know what Sarah was thinking when she looked at that spreadsheet and printed it, but I mean, you have to notice, you're the business manager making big bucks. You should know that you have an error in your spreadsheet, but apparently that didn't happen. So we'll see what that number gets plugged in and what difference it makes.
Or hopefully it was cut off and it didn't print.
It's, uh, it, it's gonna be interesting, right? Again, here, over here, over here, over here.
Until the Commonwealth recognizes that the tax levy goes up approximately three percent and is two-thirds of your funding sources. Your local receipts and your others go up approximately five percent. So both of those are somewhat keeping, uh, track with inflation. And then your state aid goes up half a percent to one and a half percent when it spikes. That's what is the problem in this equation. And that's about a quarter of your revenue.
Broken system.
They, 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 they told the state, recorded the spreadsheets we have. They told the school, "You only have to spend fifty thousand dollars more than you did last year. That's, that's on the street." And I'm thinking to myself, "Are you kidding me right now?" What's that school lunch?
What the energy costs.
They don't have a clue.
What the energy costs.
Actually, their energy didn't do too bad. I looked at that too. They weren't, they weren't significant at all, their increases, but...
Well, you guys have these to look at now. We also have a bunch of project books to update, but I think...
Yeah.
Schools meeting tomorrow in presenting their first draft budget to the committee, I believe.
Right.
So I think ultimately, once that is done and we have a copy of that, then we can really start jumping in and we'll know what we can actually reduce the paperclip count on some of the budgets.
What committee are they? FinCon?
School, school committee.
Oh, because tomorrow's Wednesday and I know FinCon meets on Wednesday, so...
No, they're not meeting, they're not proposing to FinCon yet. They are, actually, their budget subcommittee is presenting to the rest of the school committee tomorrow. So we'll get the actual budget after tomorrow, so...
Up eight hundred and fifty?
If you like.
I would.
Let's move on to some good news, Jim. Oh, man. All right, DBW, Slocum Street. We have members of Woodred Incur in the audience here. Just talk about some, some progress.
Yes. I should've told you to show up at five thirty. I apologize.
That's okay. Actually, probably better because I was calling from the Boston area, so if I tried to be down there at five thirty, I probably wouldn't be down there till seven. Also in the audience is Jay, Jay's at Levee?
Uh, Light.
Light. And Steve Bisco from, from Bisco Contracting Corp. is our contractor.
Call me sir.
So, again, uh, my name's Apple. I'm just a project manager with Woodred Incur. And as Mr. Gasper can attest to, it's been a long road to get here, but we're finally at construction. They're starting to, uh, they're planning to start construction in the beginning of April, start mobilizing. And within the first week or so, some excavation will start. For, um, just as a reminder for the work that's gonna be done, there's about twenty-two hundred feet of storm drain that's gonna go in, storm drain improvements, about twenty-four hundred feet of water main. Project also includes new sidewalk, new granite curb, and then reclaim and paving of Slocum Street as a final product. Just some of the things to expect because the way the construction starts is, or what the construction involves, there's gonna be inconvenience to the public. There's gonna be noise, dust, debris. There's gonna be large equipment around. There'll be some planned interruptions in service and those notices go out twenty-nine, forty-eight hours in advance to, to the customers that are affected. And the reason for them are we need to get control of the existing water system. Some of the valves don't work as they really should, so we're gonna put new ones in to make sure that we're not dealing with that water during construction. And then there's also some unplanned ones if we hit something that we just didn't know about. It may cause some termination in water service. Some other things to expect are the above-ground temporary water mains. The photo on the right just shows how water is provided, water service and fire protection is provided during construction. When we're doing the sidewalk work, some of the, some driveways will need to come back into just to make transition grades. Those adjustments are made during construction, so we, I can't tell you specifically which one and how far, but that's an example on the left of how it gets prepped and then in the center how it's finished. We'll have parking restrictions during the work hours. The contractor is planning to work Monday through Thursday, so four, four days a week. There'll be a break Friday through, um, and resume Monday. That hasn't changed since our pre-con meeting, right?
No, that's, that should stay the same, um, obviously unless you have a rain day during the week and you can make it up on the Friday, you're not losing that production.
Is there a reason you do four-day window and not a five-day window?
Typically, you, you just get more done. By the time you get there, you're set up. Just the hours, by the time you're spending either setting up, breaking down, if you put more into it that day, you're just, you're getting more done.
So you just wanna work, you're gonna work a little longer day?
Yeah.
Makes sense, right?
Four ten-hour days.
What's that?
Four ten-hour days.
Yeah, makes sense. Makes sense, as you said, as you get set up.
And then you gain, you have the flexibility. If you do have that rain day, you can still make it up. You're not falling behind on any kind of milestone you're trying to hit.
Right, right. Okay.
And there, there'll also likely be road closures on Slocum Street with detours around it. And part of the reason of that is, well, most of the reason for that is safety and having the public not really get, uh, have to come through the area. And some of it is, it does help with production, so it reduces the inconvenience to the, to the residents in the long run. Local, the, the people that live in the area or like live in the work zone, access will be permitted. You know, we'll make ways to get them in and emergency vehicles will also have access, but general traffic will be driven.
Will we shut down from up here, South Main Street, right at the top? Or will we look at where they're gonna be working from the bridge? Because we have Hope Street that loops over now.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna look at where...
You know, they're gonna have to shut that down and not allow anybody through Hope Street while they're at the bottom end. But once they pass that bottom end, they get past Hope, you can open that loop back up so they can go down Hope instead of shutting it right down, right?
Yeah, we will look at, at where they're working and what the detours are.
If you don't mind, I just, but because people at home want, no, go back to the map?
Yeah, I was trying to...
So what I'm saying is if they're down here, wherever they're gonna, you stand at the top at South Main Street and working your way down, or you stand at the bottom. I was told always at the bottom work your way up, right? So they're gonna start down here and you'll get past Hope Street right there. Then you can open this lane up and let them come this way. Once they get this part of construction done, they can go back to utilizing that and this'll stay blocked off. And then you, you get another side street. You can continue doing that for the loop for these people to get back into their homes and all the way up until you get up to Nye, right? And then you'll have that, and then you're just shut down, bank, bank, and shut that down and everybody else can still use the road. So it won't be a complete hundred percent shut off from Slocum Street. Is that correct?
For, for the most part, yeah. I mean, we'll, we'll have portions, like you said, Kevin, we'll have portions of it that there won't be access to, but we'll have detours around those sections.
Right. I mean, just the, the detour and the traffic instead of blocking off the whole road and from day one. If you're only at the bottom of the hill, you can still allow the top end to be used.
And the work at the intersection of South Main Street and Slocum Street, that's under Mass DOT jurisdiction, so we do have to comply with whatever, um, traffic management plans they've approved in that area.
That's, that's up at, when we get to Slocum, I mean, South Main Street. Yeah, 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 because we're gonna, we're gonna, so we are gonna cut into South Main.
We're gonna cut into South Main Street, yeah. Uh, there's some water main connections that we need to make there and there's some storm drain improvements in that intersection that need to be made. So we'll go through that. So the anticipated schedule is, uh, you know, they planned to mobilize the site, so start bringing in equipment April seventh. The above-ground water mains I talked about will be installed between April seventh and the twenty-fifth. And the storm drain improvements will start down near, at the, near the river end, um, April fourteenth. Run through July and water main improvements, kind of, they go in tandem a little bit here. May, May twenty-sixth is their anticipated start date for that and run through July eighteenth. And then the sidewalk work and the curving work and then the paving and base course, I mean, the pavement reclaim and base course paving will occur between July and October. Final paving right now is scheduled for the end of October. And, um, the, the, the town may wanna consider letting the project go, our final paving go through the winter just to make sure any settlement in the trenches is fully out because during a freeze thaw cycle, there will be some movement in these trenches, no matter how well they compact and do the, the final paving in the spring, but that's a decision that you guys can make.
Yeah, I think that makes, that makes sense. We've seen that, so we'll see how, where we make, where we make out with that. And the, um, so, Mr. James, one of the individuals that's in the audience, he's been hammering me. And he likes to talk about trees.
Yep.
And I know a lot that we've, I, I brought up, so Mr. James understands. I did bring up trees in the initial phases, but there was some things said about water services, the width of sidewalks and the things of the like. So if we could talk a little bit to Mr. James about trees.
Sure. Do you wanna ask the specific question? Do you want me to just go in general?
Well, uh, can we plant trees?
It, so it's not an easy, straightforward yes or no. Uh, the reason that it's, is it feasible? Everything is feasible. There's a cost that's, that's, uh, gets associated with it. One of the big problems is that the sidewalks in the street there are narrow. You have to have a certain clearance from any obstruction to maintain ADA compliance, so accessible access for people with disabilities. And the standard tree well depth that you need with the size, size of sidewalk that's there, wherever you put trees, you're gonna have to talk to the property owners at those locations to see if a portion of their property can be taken to allow for a tree well. And that is a challenge in my experience to maintain and something that is difficult to achieve. The cost of the trees themselves are also something that wasn't budgeted in the, in the bid, so that would be an extra cost on top of what's already known.
Well, even if we put ten trees on the north side.
Yep.
Two hundred dollars a tree. Say two hundred dollars, six footers, uh, eight footers, two hundred dollars a tree. With the grates, the grates are like two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, right? Would, would you treat them on a, treat them on a deep foot?
What I've seen for costing on any trees that have gone in or that goes in through a contract is generally between two to three thousand dollars a tree.
Okay, who's gonna plant the trees? You guys?
The contractor has. Now, I've seen other communities where we just leave them the tree well. We fill it with dirt and they come back and do it later. And we, we can make adjustments depending on what's, funding is available. The issue I see is that you need a lot of easements to make that work and I don't think that that's doable at this point.
Easements from who?
From the property owners that you're gonna have to, because you have to have, you have to bump out the sidewalks at these locations.
You could probably, we could probably go down and ask, the individuals I spoke into, they want trees. Because once you put those sidewalks in, there'll never be trees there. That's, that'll be it. It'll be a runway up and down the street. You know what trees do? You're an engineer. You know what they do. They're calming. They're great for the environment, all, all, all the above. So once that's gone, that's, that possibility is limited. That, that's gonna be it for, for our lifetimes. You know, it'd be like Main Street right here, no trees. They just put the sidewalks, no forethought, that's it. Uh, the cheapest way out. So, uh, it's just, it, it's just, so we need them. I mean, our kids, our kids, this is generational. Trees are generational. They're gonna be there for a hundred, two hundred years. Uh, and that, that's what it's all about. It's all about the environment and it, what it does for people. I mean, just imagine, you have a photo of that, people walking down that street with trees holding their kids, you know? Uh, it's, it's just a phenomenal thing and it, it'd be, it'll be just, it'd be a shame that we, we can't do it. Even a couple trees, ten trees, five trees. And make, and make, and make the grate there so we can, the town, people volunteered would actually go there. I'd buy the trees myself and plant them myself if we have the grate there in the space. I mean, it would cost the town anything. I mean, I, they pay for the grate, I'll pay for the trees. I'll do the work myself.
I, I don't think we should get hung up on buying trees. Like, that's, you know, I wouldn't get hung up on that, right? But you're saying there's some type of engineering issue.
Yeah.
So let me ask, I was Googling online. I mean, are there ways to bring trees in without, you know, putting them into the, into the sidewalk? Either with planters, I mean, you travel down south and other, you know, suburban landscaping. Well, it's not, you know, a permanent thing, but it's, but at least it's something to... And I agree because that has made it thoroughfare for truck traffic and dirt and dust and create a calming effect. So, you know, if that's something that we can look at.
There is, it is, I'm not telling you it's not feasible. It is. It's a matter of what, how much more do you guys want to spend on it? And a matter, there may be like some grate changes that we have to make to make these tree wells work from a grading perspective.
You said bump out the sidewalk. Did you mean bump it out more towards the resident?
Yes, because we can bump it out towards the street, but the street's kinda narrow right now. I wouldn't recommend it, so...
Well, I was just gonna say, that's not gonna happen because you can't have this down the street.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So when we discussed this a while back, obviously, funding constraints and everything else, I'm not worried, like David said, about the price of a few trees, right? The problem is when we were doing this, we all know the road is a narrow road already. We don't have any room on the south side. We're already moving hydrants around the corner to get them off Slocum Street, but the hydrants thankfully are located at each one of the little side speeds. So what we've done is we've taken those hydrants and we've looped it around the corner because of the no parking thing, which the parking's always but on the south side. So what we've done is we're really taking, because of the sidewalk on the north side is so narrow, we've, I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, we've, I told them we need more room on the south side for parking, right? we need more room on the south side for parking, right? So you need room to put a car, and that's why we're, we're limited on space, but you have to have lanes a certain width of the road, right? And then, so you're squeezing already over, and you're trying to do as much as you can by shawing in the south side, because you need parking on one side of that road, right? So that's, the limitations of Slocum Street has presented itself to us, and especially to engineering, saying there's limitations to what we can do. I, I don't know, I'm not gonna go ask people for easements, we already know how much work we're doing just for that one property owner that's kind enough to allow us an easement on the titleless property for our storm drain, hopefully we're there with that. It's, it's incredibly difficult, and we'd have to have a look at what the width of the north sidewalk is, ADA compliance, right, because you can't just start throwing trees in and not have that width, pass-by width from with a tree well, if that's what we're gonna call it, to the property owner's line, you need to be ADA compliant, you can't just be ADA compliant for ninety percent of the sidewalk, right?
So I think that's. That would also, sorry, but that would also be the case if you brought in like a planter thing like you did, any, any kind of obstruction, including a hydrant.
I gotta have to walk of, like, what people's front yards, are there front yards on Slocum Street?
There's nothing.
There's not much to them.
So like, a homeowner, if we provided the tree, and if a homeowner wanted to, to plant a tree?
That, that is, that is an option that might be a good compromise here to, to consider.
And you can't, you can really only put trees on the north side because the telephone lines are on the south side, right? And you don't want to stop monkeying around with that, putting trees, and you can't, because that's where the pocket is anyway, so, I mean, we could take a look at it, I mean, I'll go over to Slocum Street, and I'm like I do all the time, and look at different things and see if we can, if I can identify certain lots where we, we might be able to do that, and see if we can accommodate, and I don't know if it's gonna be ten, that's one every two hundred feet, right? There's two hundred, there's twenty-two hundred linear feet? So, the one every two hundred feet, I don't know if we can accommodate that, or maybe there is something we could do, a few up the north side, and maybe throw one or two in on the south side, right? And see where property bounds lie.
Try to be as creative as we can.
Yeah, it certainly can be looked at, there's opportunity to do it.
And if Woodrow and Curran wanted to be a sponsor and donate the trees, we'd love that, too.
There you go.
I can talk to the people that can make that decision, because I can, but I certainly will offer, I will, I will tell them that that's what they like.
Same with Bisco.
Yeah, ultimately, the biggest part is, is, like you said, ADA compliance is big, they're already starting to really delve into communities and their ADA compliance, so I don't want to affect that whatsoever.
And, I mean, other things to consider, like, and this is just from the times I've done this and run into it, is, the tree looks great here, but underground, there's a gas service, or there's a water service, or there's sewer service that doesn't cost money to move.
We're not getting, we're not.
There's all the challenges.
That ain't happening, Jack, not for trees, okay? You don't want to go plant a tree somewhere else in the town before we, the cost of this project is already high. We're not gonna start just saying, oh, it's only, you know, a couple thousand dollars for trees, people don't get it, no, it's not, right? And you, you hit the nail on the head, because I was gonna tell you, why don't you bring up the other thing that you brought up to me, whereas you gotta remember this, is you have a house, the layout of a house lot, then you have a driveway like he's shown, where's the water service main going from the main into the house versus location of the driveway and the water main serving, that might just be right where you want that tree, but ain't gonna do that.
I identified.
Gas service.
Identified ten spots today, there, there's no, no water lines or gas lines around there, so, I mean, some of those peoples, the top, they have double lots, so there's no, there's no pipes there.
Okay.
So they can go, they can go there, they can go, I identified at least ten, ten spots down there on the north side today, that have no pipes around them, because that's what you have to worry about.
I'm happy to look into whatever.
Why don't I do this, why don't I get together with Mr. James, right? I'll get a map, I'll do an overview of Slocum Street, with all the houses on the north side, I'll get together with Mr. James, and we'll walk up the side of the road, and he can, I'll put little X's, right? And then you can tell me whether there's a gas main, because you know all about that, or water main or whatnot, and say, so, you have identified ten, only six are feasible, done, right? And we'll see what we can do based on that.
Yeah, any, anything.
One is better than none.
That's right, I mean, two or three, a friend of mine, David's chance, and he, he works for, he's an arborist for Tom New Bedford, and he came over, and he was talking to me about it, and he said, even if we put two, two or three trees on that street, that'd be two or three trees that aren't there now.
I mean, we have the contractors here, so the amount of money I'm gonna save on concrete, I'm gonna buy your trees.
Well, yeah, why, well, I mean, I've got, I've got the same idea.
He's shaking, he's saying.
Yeah, keep dreaming.
No, 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 me.
We, we work on this, man, let's work on this, boy.
They laughed, they're like, yeah, that's not it.
I figured I'd get a smirk out of him. Gets you up in the extra form work is what he's gonna do.
Yeah, I know, I was just gonna say, yeah, minus the extra form work.
Yeah.
Let me, let me just do that, and I'll forward you that map, right? We can scan it in and forward it over so you, and you can take a look at what you've done on your engineering side of it, and you can say, yeah, okay, we can probably get away with something like that.
And just a, a word of advice is, when, if you guys go this route, make sure that you select the right tree, because I've had communities who want these big, tall trees, they look great initially, but ten, fifteen years from now, their root balls are just lifting the sidewalk.
Well, that's the other thing, right?
And then they're arguing with people about having to cut down trees.
The arborist from New Bedford will, will join us. Will join us, we know what kind of trees to put up there, you're not gonna put yams, touch yams or anything, you know, you're gonna put trees there.
The rooting system only goes down, not this way.
Yeah, well, that's right, they're, they're plenty of them, like, the red maples, the oaks, that's, that's the street trees, you want, you want street trees, that aren't gonna cause any damage, you're gonna have a grate over it, it won't lift up the sidewalks, I mean, this is.
We hope not.
We, so I would prefer to have pound trees, but I don't think they'll survive winter.
No, no, that's.
But you want to talk about calming.
Calming, you want.
Pound trees.
Calming effect, you know, and, and also, I get you guys here, we're up into our street meters, our speed meters, we had a speed meter up the top, they got knocked over, then we have the one at the bottom, that was on a telephone pole, and it disappeared.
So, can't get too in-depth, because he's not on the agenda, because we're not talking about that, but remember the conversation I had with you, and then I said that they're probably not gonna put them back up until the show's done.
Until it's out.
I already talked, I already figured that one out, I just, I apologize if I never got back to you.
Thank you.
I thought I did, and I apologize, but.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
You're starting at the bottom of the river, you wanna just go over briefly the alternative that we've been working on for months?
So, the project was bid with an alternate to relocate the outfall to the river, because it currently runs underneath the bridge apartment. The, the award of the project was for the base bid and the alternate, but the, the town has not given notice to proceed on the alternate portion, because we're still working through getting an easement through the parking lot that's on the.
North side?
Yeah, north side. That is slow to progress, we need a sign-off on a permit application from that property owner, which is still, I still haven't received from council yet.
From?
From their council, yeah.
Their council?
But there's some permitting effort that's gonna follow that as well, we still, that was budgeted back in the design, so we're still covered with that, it's not like an extra expense.
Right, but why, why, why is that? We worked with the attorney, and I don't want to mention attorneys' names on TV, but we went to the office together, and, and then we sent in, and I think I sent back over diagrams of what the easement would look like in the layout.
Our attorney or their attorney?
It, the actual property owner needs to sign off on this, because you guys have already signed it, but the Reg, DEP and the other regulators, for us to submit that permit, they need documentation that all parties.
Have you sent that to them, or has our attorney sent that to them?
I know we've sent it, I can certainly resend it.
Might be worthwhile to follow up with the attorney as well.
We need, we need to follow up, because I, I was reviewing that months ago, and it should have been taken care of months ago, I mean, you and I went downtown to the lawyer's office and met with that individual, he's been super good to us. Yeah, all the communications, and I know I sent the drawing, so it should just be all said and done, and he's saying, I don't think you can go for, I think one of the initial, initial hangups was for permitting, state permitting, he needs the owner to sign off on it, and that's what we were waiting for, but it was all about, the attorney wasn't comfortable with his client signing off until the easement was recorded, the distance in a drawing, and I seen that drawing, I have an email of it, I seen it, I got it.
Has that, has the easement been done?
I, I.
All right.
I know, I know we've done the survey for it.
Yeah.
Whether the actual, and, I mean, the legal end of it, if that's both done, I don't know, I, I don't know the, I think, I mean, it may be a good idea just to have a meeting on this with all parties involved.
It'll be resolved before the end of the week, I promise you.
No, I'm happy to attend it if you need.
It will be resolved by the end of the week, I promise you.
Sounds good.
Why are you looking at me with fuwi and chew face? It will be resolved by the end of the week.
No, I'm not looking at you, I'm trying to figure out.
Trying to figure out what it is.
Why you and I approve that easement, then it isn't.
We'll get to that tomorrow.
That's what we're gonna find out by the end of the week, I promised him already, so.
All right.
Thank you, Archibald.
Thank you very much, appreciate you. Then we'll see you in a couple weeks.
You folks, you have conversations around where you're gonna store things, if you need us for storage, that gentleman that's offering the easement, I think you would offer for the use of storage of some of your equipment?
We're scheduling a pre-con for next, I believe it's next week, to kind of go over all this.
With us, all right.
Can you try to get ahold of the guy who owns that car lot, the garage over there? If you could track them down, we'd appreciate it, that'd be a great place to put them.
Oh, the one that's right at the top of the, yeah, yeah, all of those, those things will get kind of discussed during that period.
I'll have that answered for you, too, about using that for storage of this, these gentleman's equipment at the bottom of the hill anywhere, I gotta work on Mr. Wonas request.
I'll just show you. These are hot, these are hot plastic, so they're less expensive, and the iron ones are still.
Do we need this, last piece?
No, we haven't got it.
Selectment's announcement?
Construction's gonna start on Slocum Street April seventh, so everybody that lives on Slocum Street and the surrounding area, please be patient, all you folks have been waiting twenty, thirty years for that road to be redone, it's finally gonna happen, so I just ask for everybody's patience that live around that area.
That's it, good news.
Good times. I just want to say happy belated birthday to my mother.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Your motion was adjourned?
So moved. Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.